Okay, let's go ahead and get started. We can. If everybody agrees, please rise for the invocation and then the pledge. I have to follow, we come here today to do the county's business. Give us wisdom in the sermon as we look over the tax rebalance. Be with our citizens as they continue to make adjustments for our, or get things back to the way they were prior to the storm. And people call them the victims of the storm, throughout North Carolina and the eastern part of the state. And be with this country and help us do the right thing as we are approaching elections and everything else. And all these things we ask, in thy name, will I say, I'm in. Okay?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I would like to call the board, the special meeting of the Gage County Board of Commissioners for October 25th, 2016. Before us is the agenda. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
I'm chairman, I make a motion to approve the agenda if necessary.
A motion's been made, do I hear a second?
Second motion, Madam Chairman.
Okay, a motion's been made, a public second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, I need a motion to go into a public hearing to look at the schedule for evaluations for the tax rebalance.
So, second.
A motion's been made, a public second. All those in favor of entering to the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We're in public hearing. Okay, Mrs. Lane and Mrs. McGinnis, I voted here today. One's the tax administrator, one is the rebalance person. So, we've got the expertise, experts with us today.
Yes, good afternoon. I want to thank everybody, the commissioners, for taking time out, certainly moved through this public hearing. It is for the 2017 Schedule of Values. You know, you had your manual a couple of weeks and an opportunity to look through. And it's also that information time for the public. If the public had a few calls, basically, what was the schedule? You know, and we've got a few of those calls in the tax office. What does it represent and that kind of thing? And the, the schedule is basically the new standard. As we move into the 2017, it, it is comprised of the new rates for building land, all the dwelling rates, if you will, in the county. And it's, it's our standard to go back for the next eight years. With that, I didn't know if the board had specific questions. And I see we've got some audience members present. If, if they had any questions of any sort, if not, I can hit some of the highlights of, in the schedule.
Why don't you do the highlights and then we'll do the question?
Okay, all right, excuse me. It's very elaborate. It breaks it down with the, the land, the buildings, depreciation. For the most part, if we look at the, the overall schedule and what it's going to represent going into 2017, the land, as we know, from the last reappraisal, we had various rates that were in place based on sales. We've done the same thing, just go around, looking at the sales as, as the market indicates of where those new rates may be. Overall, with the one acre homesite valuation in the county, we can expect at least a 20% decrease. That's an improved lot, if you will, that's overall. And that's, that's from Riddleson Township to Mittensville, that's, that's countywide. On the average, if we use the example of, of about $41,400 on the homesite from the last reappraisal, we're considerably down from that this, this rebound. We're about $32,000 or so, that's on an approved lot. So, just to hit some of the key points. The utility adjustment was increased. Last rebalance, we ran $2,400. And this by standards is probably still conservative because we, we verified with Mr. Reddell and got some feedback for an improved septic, if you will, or connection. That did see an increase from $2,400 to overall $3,800. And that's a, a umbrella term for, for both the water and the septic. That's still pretty conservative even by our sister county, you know, the rate they run. Overall, your, your open land and your woodland in the county did see that same decrease, if you will. Even some of those farm sales, and we're talking about qualified sales, you know, in the county. Nothing that we could, this caused by nature, a foreclosure of any sort, a related family member sale. Those also saw the 15%, 20% decrease per acre rate that we're running on those. The woodland, much the same, and that does not include those tracts with considerable timber valuation. In North Carolina, we are not allowed or we don't appraise timber valuation. So, that's kind of an excluded, extracted from the sale. The tracts that we previously had in the county, vacant one acre tracts. I'll just use this example, if a, we'll use a 10 acre site. If we had a one acre undeveloped site in the previous years, the previous reevaluation, it did not receive present use value. This reappraisal with our database, with our panel system, with Keystone, we're able to do that. So, that one acre, even though standards engage, we might break out an undeveloped site, if you will. We, we still let that farmer qualify for present use because it may be in cultivation. Even though we have it allocated as a site, it still receives PUV value. So, that's going to be a new feature, I think. We'll still have a market value, but we'll still have that present use that, you know, is, is received based on if it's in cultivation. So, that's a new feature, I think, as we get this sort of kind of chiming in and, and we work, you know, through the panel system, getting that completes.
That starts at 10 acres?
Well, it, it may be, it may be.
You have 10 acres of your farm.
Yes, with the, with the ag. But it could be more than that, Mr. Jordan. It could be an occasion where we've had an old dwelling up there from previous years, a two-story dwelling and a one acre homesite, and it could be 50 acre tract. But for whatever reason, that one acre homesite or site, if you will, did not get PUV value. But if that house has been properly removed and they have corn, soybean, or if it's in cultivation or in a forestry management program, they still receive that PUV. So, it could be any acreage, but as Sheriff Hawker indicated, the minimum to start ag is usually 10 acres, is by law. So, but, yes, sir, I'll just use that example. Also, with regard to land, I took an opportunity to tag in your book the solar and the cell sites. For this reappraisal, this will be the first occurrence in Gates. Most counties have already followed suit with cell and solar sites. We've got an opportunity to recognize how much of that acreage is in panel use solar farms, if you will. And we decided $8,000 is very conservative, but also by what some of these sister counties are running. As I mentioned at the last board meeting, I did send out letters trying to invite some of the, those landowners to respond back with regard to some lease, some rent information and receiving the response. So, in light of that, those rates are kind of indicated by some sister counties of what they're running. And I can tell you, there, that 8,000 is, is slightly below what they're running. They might run 10,000 or 12,000 per acre. 20,000 on the cell tower sites. And that's just for the site, whether it's Verizon or US Cellular.
That's per acre, also, or per this site?
Um, that is just the site, because it's very difficult to glean the actual acreage of the cell tower site, although we've got some surveys on file. You've got fencing, you've got those expandable support rods that extend out from the tower that actually they may be trying to cultivate as much as they can around that. We've seen that, you know, in a common place where they try to kind of disc up to those expandable tower supports. So, that'll be per a site.
But the solar farms are, but is per acre?
Uh, that is correct. With the three, we currently have in accounting, that acreage kind of amount is from the deeds on file. The gate solar, the sun energy and the sugar run solar LLC, those have been pulled from the deeds office and will be reflected accordingly. Okay, we, we kind of leave the land for, in that bird's eye view. And we move on to the building rates that we develop. There was no visible change in the price per square foot for, for dwellings. On the average, we're running $75.50. Now, keep in mind, that's just when we look at a C, a C grade house, an average condition. The schedule and our panel system allows the capability to, to give pluses, if you will. We might have a A grade house or a B grade house, and it's going to follow suit with various factors accordingly. But a C grade, average condition house will yield $75.50. That was not changed from last reappraisal?
And that's per square foot, right?
It is, yes, ma'am. And like I said, our, our panel system is unique, as most counties have that capability to adjust based on factors. We can plus it or in the other direction, minus it, you know, to reflect that appropriate evaluation. Overall, with the, you know, we, we still add for the plumbing, the fixtures. With, with our panel system, you get three standard fixtures with the compute in our database. Anything above that, if you've got additional bass or additional half path or whatever the situation is, it adds per fixture, usually about $600 for, for that additional feature. That was actually consistent with last reappraisal, that's all we'll change with that. The heating and air rates, they went down slightly, $2.17 a square foot. The heating and air also was unchanged, and it drives off a percentage base of that dwelling. If you have a dwelling that's one and a half story and a portion of that percentage is unheated, if you will. It's either 100%, 75% or 50%. It's, it's that base rate, and then it applies accordingly to reflect that valuation. That was also kind of a, a standard. We did do something new, and Ms. McGinnis was again chief on developing a new rate for modulars. Now, in, in our existing system, we had to be creative with evaluation at the time, you know, for modulars. We've got new depreciation and we have a new schedule specifically for those modulars. They're, they're in their, their category, you know, with regarding the sick build, double lives. They're, they're kind of on a, on a horizon for themselves. So, we had an opportunity to develop that. Those rates are also reflected based on quality grade. You have some of those modulars with the high pitched roof and nature that they may appraise for more than something on the, that's on frame, if you will. So, you have kind of categories within that modular category. But the rate is, is separate in and of itself. That was also a new feature in this reappraisal. And for the most part, all the additional building rates, those commercial rates or the standard that we saw from last reappraisal, our biggest thing was, was the land. And, and that was something that we saw indicated, you know, when these fee appraisals, people who have refinanced or they bring in appraisal to the tax office and they mention, oh, my valuation is off. But, and where we're off is, is, was, and, you know, won't be anymore is, is the land portion. So, we've made that adjustment and we're right on with the market as we're indicated by, you know, we should be by the Department of Revenue standards. Overall, and we'll continue to look in these coming weeks, the daddy in the tree, looking at the sales, all those features will continue. We'll have a chance to, to fine tune. But with the 16 sales, we're, we're looking at a per parcel of about 6% per parcel, if you will. That breaks it down specifically in terms of loss of value, decrease in value. But then, you know, that's based on just the 16s, you know, what we're seeing overall with that. And like I said, we'll have the latter part of 22 this October, November and December to look at any final sale, qualified sales. See where we are. And basically, that's kind of the bird's eye view. The, the schedule sometimes can be intense and very, you know, it drives up a lot of tables. There's various land tables that interpolate with one another to make the calculate happen with regard to landscaping, well, let's say landscaping, there's a landscaping condition. I don't want to make it sound like you have a Japanese U and you get penalized, but a landscaping ability to, you know, based on location. It also goes and looks at a land size adjustment table based on acreage. So, those rates also interpolate, if it's open, if, if it's wooded, what type of soil it is based on those 30 some, well, we have 32 different soil types in the county. That sounds crazy, but all those, all those matrix features come together to, to have it priced accordingly. The present use, I may have touched on this, did, you know, we did have some variation with that. The use advisory board, they meet up in Raleigh, they decide what those present use rates will be. That schedule is, is put out every year, but only the reappraisal counties, you know, utilize one for every day. I mean, even though the rates may change yearly, we certainly are locked in 17. That, particularly with the wooded land, that, that dropped in price. So, we're going to see a little bit of increase with the PUV value for open, but on the same token, almost a, what, 40% or so for the wood, woodland with some of those soil types, soils one, two, which is like your Altavista, Goldsboro type wooded soils. They took a decrease and as we get into the three soils, they kind of maintain. But you're, you're talking previously something that was, I think I have a reference here for wooded particularly, 370 an acre to 260 an acre. But that's PUV value. So, and then we saw kind of an increase with the open, if you will, with the ag land. So, that's in a nutshell, the schedule. It is our guide, it's in place. This schedule naturally will run for the, the next eight years. You know, it's, it's, it reflects our, all our panel system, all of our intricate goings on, if you will, within that compute. And how do we arrive at value? It, it, you know, it's, it's interesting to get in and look at all those components come together as we're, and I have, you know, encountered and discovered and, and whatnot. So, are there any kind of questions or comments?
Any questions? Any comments from anyone in the, in this department?
I have a question for you. Single-family dwelling.
Mm-hmm.
Going, I guess you'd call it an improved lot.
Okay.
Yes, county water and everything. You told me the, the evaluation was not going to go up?
Uh, well, it, now, overall, you're, if you get your notice, it, your parcel valuation may or may not go up. But the price we're running per square foot did not go up. So, that's consistent. Let's say you've added some improvements if we went out, or okay, in this case, you may not have. So, despite having a, I just want to mention that since it's in the public setting, even though the dwelling rates went down, the land may have gone down, individual parcels may or may not go down. And how much percentage points, it does vary. Yes, sir.
Question I have, well, you've got a couple of acres there, but part of it's small. Doesn't bother me in the least.
Okay.
I've got some pasture and I've got the land that my, my house is actually on, in my garage.
Okay.
The improved part would be the land and the garage, correct?
Uh, that is correct, yes.
The, the house is actually on, the other would be pasture and small?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, and hopefully, you know, it's, it's priced accordingly. Hopefully, we've looked at those soil types, you know, and that would be opportunity as we, we've been out in the field, visiting the property, it, things like that. And let's say you have, I'm going to say outfall ditch or, or we go by and it's low in a sweat area. It's not subject to building standards, if you will. Those things, we've tried to make notes on the, on the board, you know, in terms of what's there. Not as a negative impact, but help us, you know, you know, refine those values and hit the home run where we should be.
Okay. Anyone else with comments? We have no comments and no questions. Do I obtain a motion to come out of public hearing?
Second, that motion, Madam Chairman.
Motion's been made, a second, to come out of public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. We have a public hearing at this time. I have just a general question, didn't have to be in public hearing. Looking at the total picture of the county, what do you see the evaluation of all the property in this county being compared to what it was eight years ago?
Yeah, I think on the high end, and you know, you'll correct me if I'm wrong, if, if, you know, we get 8 to 10%, I think countywide, you know, with, with the decrease. I think that's what we're seeing right now. We've not seen any other sales to indicate anything different.
So, the, the total amount of taxable property in the county, the money that we tax on would be about 8 to 10% of what it was.
Yeah, I think overall, that's based on the sales.
That's kind of what I wanted to know. But, and the reason I wanted to know that is that, you know, we have a revenue neutral, you know, we have a budget. And in the, we still, but budget probably is not going to increase 8 to 10%. So, you actually probably be paying by the same thing. But I mean, there are some corrections in, as you mentioned.
That's right, yeah. And, and I'll, I'll remind again, we're in the public setting, even though we're seeing a decrease, parcels individually by nature may or may not see that same decrease. I, I can see some of the public, you know, saying the values went down, but if they added an improvement on their property in general, maybe we had it as a C plus house and maybe it might be a B minus if we went out and did the reappraisal and corrected our records. So, I just want to mention that because, you know, that says, well, we went through rebalance, we should have a decrease. But per parcel wise and on an individual basis, we may or may not see that, so.
I'm going to send that, post it eight years, people have added things or, or removed things.
That's right, yes, yes, ma'am, yes.
Okay. Thank you so much.
All right.
Renee, do you need to say anything? One more question.
When do we receive our paperwork that tells us what our tax bill will give this year?
Right, very good question. Into the, hopefully by the third week of February of 17, you're going to get a new notice evaluation. It won't be a bill, it'll simply reflect on that new assessment of your property. At that time, we'll get into the informal process, if you will. If somebody wants to review their tax card or tax information, that, that's going to be, and that'll lead into some, some spring activity for us, you know, as we get on the heels of the reappraisal.
Also, I thought the question was, when are we getting our tax bill this year?
Oh, yes, yes, ma'am. We're still working very hard for that too. I mean, very, very hard, Miss Hawker, trying to, you know, hopefully no later than that second week of November, we, we can have them, you know, sent out, yes, ma'am. And thank you for that also, people curious on that.
And will still be due by January 5th, right?
Oh, they will be, yeah. And, yes, sir.
Do you, just off the top of head, have any idea of what the percentage of personal property revenue is to our real property?
I don't have that percentage with me. I can research that and get that back to you compared to. Now, do you want that obviously right now in the appraisal world or for the re, rebound picture?
Well, it's kind of a rebound issue because, you know, we've got a 70/30. Even if we have a decrease in the real property, you know, generally, your personal property stays about the same or depend on getting new equipment or whatever, automobiles and so forth. You know, that could go up, basically.
Um, well, it, it actually, it will go up slightly. The usual trend of personal property actually is a decrease, about on the average of 3% a year. However, we did add a few things here on the, on the personal side, business personal. Solar farms will add some slightly to that. But in terms of the overall offset, I don't, I don't have those figures in front of me. But you're right, we had some increase, but like the boats and those jet skis every year, if you will, and even single lives, they show a, on the average, 3% decrease every year with valuation. So, we know we lose that, whether we gain enough throughout with the solar. Perhaps we do to offset some of that, but certainly.
And of course, if people buy a new boat or new jet skis or.
That's right, yes, ma'am, yes.
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, I was, uh, went to pay my Troy County tax bill about two months ago. And I said, well, answers raised where they were, I'm going to pay my Gage County bill, and I couldn't find it. And then, so a couple of people asked me, so when are we going to get our tax bill? And I don't hate to be upsetting, but why are we so late this year?
Well, you know, part of that is the.
They told me to get them back in the late summer.
Yeah, that's right, in August, September, you're right, the third week of August, September. Yes, some of that, we, the panel software we've been using, some of that also, I'll take responsibility with, you know, not having those out, just round free on that. We're working very hard to get those, those out to you. I think, sure, once it was out, what, third week of August or so, that, or the fourth week, is that, yes, sir.
I, there was some correction, y'all, on that, is that one of the reasons?
Well, some of the commercial calculates, it was a chief reason, that's right, with the evaluations with that. Those abstracts were not where they needed to be. Every commercial building in the county was wrong. So, if I hit the button to send the tax notices out, you can imagine Donald Jordan and all these other things would be off. They, they were, you know, within our county database. I can assure you that one in Riddleson was not at 600,000 when I looked at my abstract. It was well under that. So, in realizing that problem, you know, we called our support leader, making those corrections, yes, sir. So, that's one of the things I'll also, you know, accept responsibility for some of that. But when we see things like that and our abstracts are not correct, I can imagine just hitting the button arbitrarily just to have those notices go out and then have to send a correction back. So, we're trying very hard to, to make sure that they're in place, it's round free. I apologize for the delay, you can make a free pay.
Well, there's nothing to be made with, I mean, if I don't get one.
Yeah.
Of course, the county, when they come cut my water off, I don't pay my taxes, so that's what I want to be.
Well, no, no, sir, no, sir.
It's just part of the soft wire. We've switched soft wires, it's, it's, sorry.
And as I asked, Madam Chairman, we might force him, Ms. Lane's keeping an eye on that and, and keeping a finger on it as well.
Well, certainly, thank you for Mr. Freeman, yeah, I've tried. It seemed like you look in one direction and you see a rainbow and quite frankly, in the other direction is, is not so much a rainbow. So, but in any case, we're, we're working very hard and I appreciate the board's patience on those tax notices. I'll be the first one to tell you, I'll be anxious when the button is, is to hit send, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to revenue number four, old business. And that's election budget money. Oh, yeah. Excuse me, keep me straight. We need to have a motion by approving this schedule of that rebalance.
Um, actually, Madam Chairman, that would be up for approval at the November meeting. This was just more or less the public hearing.
Okay, I got you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
I, I asked her, did she need that for today?
Okay.
Okay, so we'll put all that on November. Okay, moving on to revenue number four, old business, election budget money, election budget money.
Yes, the last meeting, it was requested for an additional $5,371.73. And that was approved, but we neglected to put in the motion where that money was coming from. Was it being pulled from the miscellaneous line of the commissioners or was that being pulled from fund balance? And in order to process it, we need that as well as the sign of the benefit from the board of elections.
How much does this lady's fund balance condition have right now? I mean, this lady's funds in that line?
I did not bring that with me. It's over $20,000. We know that there were a few salary adjustments that we have already made since beginning of the year that were going to come out of that line as well.
And how much is the adjustment that we need?
It was $5,371.73. It was $5,371.73.
We would make that easier for finance and county manager, because it doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
Madam Chairman, I'll make the motion that we move it from our fund balance.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motions been made, and second to take the money from the Board of Elections from, I think we can proceed a purchase order from the...
The budget amendment.
A budget amendment, I signed a budget amendment from the Board of Elections from the fund balance. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay. I'm not sure the new business, I didn't technically detect, do anything?
We're not having anything.
Okay, because we have to own, do what's advertised. Okay, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So, second.
Motion's been made, a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Our next meeting is November the first, but we're meeting on Tuesday at 10 o'clock, not against Tuesday, so remember that, guys.